This meeting of the Williamsburg James City County School Board, again, good to be back with everybody. And if I can have a member certify closed session for us, please.
I certify that to the best of each member's knowledge, the Williamsburg James City County School Board, while in closed session, discussed only public business matters lawfully exempted from open meeting requirements and stated in the Virginia law, and that only such public matters as were identified in the motion conveying the closed meeting were heard, discussed, and considered.
Thank you, Ms. Hunley. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Ms. Young. Ms. Aller?
Mrs. Hunley.
Aye.
Mrs. Ortego.
Aye.
Mrs. Young.
Aye.
Dr. Beers.
Aye.
Ms. Cook.
Aye.
Ms. Hummel.
Aye.
Mr. Dowell.
Aye. And for the viewing public's information, we have Ms. Ortego meeting with us virtually, just staying clear from us, as she's a little under the weather. But thank you for being with us virtually, Ms. Ortego. Can I have a motion to approve the agenda this evening?
I move to approve the agenda as presented.
Thank you, Ms. Hummel.
Second.
Thank you, Ms. Cook. Any discussion? Seeing none. Ms. Aller?
Ms. Hummel. Mrs. Hunley.
Aye.
Mrs. Ortego.
Aye.
Mrs. Young.
Aye.
Dr. Beers.
Aye.
Ms. Cook.
Aye.
Mr. Dowell.
Aye. All right. Moving on to item 4.1, announcements and superintendent's report. Dr. Herring?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Yesterday was a student holiday, and those students were not at school. Staff were hard at work collaborating, learning, and planning. Pictured here, middle school teachers learned about the question formulation technique, a strategy that promotes student curiosity, critical thinking, and cognitive engagement. Collaborating, learning, and planning days throughout the year are critical for our staff to reflect on their practice and support our students' learning. Sunday was National Custodian Appreciation Day. WJCC custodial staff members work year-round to maintain safe and healthy spaces in all WJCC schools and offices. Thank you to our incredible and much appreciated custodial staff for your contributions to the WJCC schools' community. Our buildings look great because of your work and dedication. Also, if you are interested in joining our incredible custodial team, please visit our website and click Careers. Thank you, Mr. Chair. That concludes my report for this evening.
Thank you, Dr. Herring. We do greatly appreciate all of our custodians, and I'm glad that we can set apart a date to show our appreciation to each one of them. Are there any members that have a report this evening? I just wanted to mention that Dr. Beers and I, and I know that several of our members participated in the VSBA Legislative Advocacy Conference two Thursdays ago, and of course, not the first one that we've attended, Dr. Beers and I, but always very informative. And one of the big takeaways for me was FOIA, and with respect to FOIA, requirements for closed meetings, and it was just a good opportunity to be refreshed as to the few opportunities that we have to meet in closed session. And I appreciate each one of us holding ourselves accountable to make sure that everything that does need to be shared in public is shared in public. So, big takeaway for me. All right. I'm not seeing anybody else with a report this evening. We'll move on to public comment 5.01. Dr. Beers?
Okay. At this point in our meeting, where citizens are invited to address the board, those citizens desiring to speak have submitted speaker cards to the clerk prior to the start of tonight's meeting. Speakers are asked to come to the podium when their name is called, state their name, and direct their comments to the chair of the board. It's the board's interest and desire that all comments are heard and respected. Hence, the citizens are asked not to engage in applause, verbal outbursts, or any other type of demonstration during the presentations. Personnel matters are not considered in public meetings. Therefore, the board requests that all speakers refrain from making reference to specific individuals in any form or fashion. Though the board does not respond to your comments, your comments are heard and appreciated. Each speaker is allocated one minute and thirty seconds to make their presentation, and the board asks that you respect this time limitation. Also, please be reminded that no time may be yielded to another speaker. Your acceptance and adherence to these guidelines will be greatly appreciated. Thank you, Mr. Chair. My directions are completed.
Thank you, Dr. Beers.
And our very first speaker is Jessica Anderson.
Hello. So, my name's Jessica Anderson. I'm both a WJCC parent as well as an employee. And I wanted to discuss agenda item 7.02. I know you're going to be talking about the school year and the tier system that's coming up. I think all of us would agree that we would benefit from additional bus drivers and buses to get it down to possibly two-tier system, but I understand there's obstacles, both financially and personnel-wise, that hinder this. However, I do believe we need to make some significant changes to benefit both our students and staff. Many studies have been done showing the benefits of later school start times for the older students in middle and high school, allowing for more adequate sleep and ensure more alert and prepared students. This data shows improvements in focus, testing, and completion of schoolwork assigned. I recognize that many families depend on older students to get home before younger siblings, as well as after-school sports being a caveat, but neither of these should supersede the needs and benefits of our students and their education. I also wanted to quickly highlight, I work at one of the two-tier schools. I know many of my coworkers would love to also be here and speak, but it's not possible because of the finish time of our school day. Currently, the second-tier elementary schools have been the same for, I think, over a decade now, and there was some understanding that they would be flip-flopped on occasion so that the teachers in those later tiers who don't have as much access to doctor's appointments after school or eligibility to make those appointments, they have to take a whole or a half-day to accommodate. They don't have more leave time, and yet, they have less access to get to those appointments after school. So, I really think if we could somehow make it so they can switch times and benefit everybody involved, that would be beneficial to everyone. I hope you can consider that.
Thank you, Ms. Anderson.
Thank you, and I have some.
We'll give it to her. There we go. Thank you, Ms. Anderson.
And our next speaker is Jill Piles.
Hello.
Hi.
Thanks for, I hope you have a good meeting tonight. I ran over here. I wanted to thank the teachers and staff. Hope you had a good day yesterday. Thanks for pouring into the students and families. Be sure to join for all those community members, be sure, at least parents, be sure to join PTA and donate. Our PTA has been awesome. Thank you. It's a good start to the year. So, I run one of the prayer groups in WJCC, and I'm glad there's a Fellowship of Christian Athletes Group at Jamestown High. We have our Good News Clubs running, and every, once a month, we'll have a prayer at the flagpole. And students can start up their own clubs at lunch. Just contact your principal, and though it's a short lunch, and that's student-led during lunchtime. And I hope you have a good meeting. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Piles.
And, that's it? Yeah, we had two tonight.
Just two. Okay. Thank you, Dr. Beers. All right. We'll move on to item 6.1 of our proposed agenda items. A review of Vertexco's proposed change order to IFB 2022715 for Berkeley Middle School's cooling tower replacement.
Mr. Chair, thank you, Mr. Chair. Mr. Snipes is going to present the item this evening and the potential change order.
Good evening, school board members. Herring. Tonight's proposed agenda item supports goal six of the strategic plan, and it is worth for your consideration, is the review and request for proposed change order for IFB number 202715, which is to replace the cooling tower at Berkeley Middle School and provide that contract to Vertexco in the amount of $257,082.58. In 2009, the cooling tower was replaced at Berkeley Middle School, but although not beyond its useful life, the driveshaft, fan wheels, and galvanized steel water basin have rusted, which is creating multiple leaks and system failure. In the fiscal year 2020-2023 Capital Improvement Plan, funds were included to replace the entire HVAC system at Berkeley Middle School. However, the cooling tower was not considered because it had six years of useful life remaining. However, as you have just informed you, they are having multiple leaks. The cooling tower was not included in the scope, and we recommend that we replace the cooling tower congruently with the HVAC system, and that so that each will be on the same replacement schedule as the components in the HVAC system. The scope of work in this project includes installing a 184-ton closed-circuit-forced draft cooling tower with stainless basin, low-noise fan, and sump heaters, along with demolition of the previous cooling tower. Again, the superintendent recommends that you review this information and be prepared to vote at your next school board meeting.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Snipes. Any questions? Ms. Cook?
Mr. Snipes, do we have any idea why we're losing six years of useful life in this situation? Do you have any theories on that?
We do not have any theories on that. We replace cooling towers intermittently. We just, we replaced one beforehand at Stonehouse before it went out. We can require, inquire with the architects and engineers on what the.
No, I was just curious if there was some background information and whether this is becoming, if this is abnormal, or, you know, becoming more normal.
Again, it's, it's normal. And I'll give you another example. The actual, our maintenance team actually replaced one at War Hill about two years ago. So, they saved us some money. So, it's, it's normal that the cooling towers may not be just meeting their useful life. Maybe use, and maybe how often we're using them.
Ms. Young?
Mr. Snipes, there's no warranty on, on parts or anything?
The warranty, there is a warranty, however, there, the warranty has expired. When your cooling towers are usually expected to last almost twenty years, just like the, just like the HVAC system, but it expires after five to ten years.
After five years. Okay. Thank you.
Ms. Ortego. I'm going to try not to forget you here.
Yeah. It says here that it was, it was expected to have six more years. What was the total time of expected useful life?
Twenty years.
Twenty. So, we're just six, okay.
I was just curious, and maybe along the lines of what Ms. Cook was asking, are there any other cooling towers on the horizon that we need to be aware of for any of our other schools?
We will look into that. We have tried to keep all of our HVAC systems on a schedule. However, during the times when we did not have the funds to support it, some things were replaced early, but I will give you an estimate of when those would be replaced.
We know unfortunately, they just don't make things the way they used to. And almost, it almost seems as if they make them to fail before that useful life, that twenty-year period. So, yeah, just be, not a special project. I was just kind of curious, but, okay. All right. Thank you. Dr. Herring?
Just as a point of reference, the funding for this project is included in the HVAC capital improvement money already approved, and we've spoken to the city and county about those funds, and they've approved the use of them.
Thank you, Dr. Herring. All right. I think we'll move on to our information discussion items. Thank you, Mr. Snipes. Looks like probably you're coming back. Item 7.1, our fiscal year 24, ten-year capital improvement plan. Dr. Herring?
As Mr. Snipes is getting ready, Mr. Chair, this is the committee's recommendations tonight, and Mr. Snipes is going to present the work of the committee, the committee members, and some other pieces of information for you this evening. This precedes the superintendent's capital improvement plan, which will come in November. Thank you, Mr. Snipes.
Good evening again, Mr. Chair, members of the board, and Dr. Herring. This evening, we will be presenting to you the recommendations of the Capital Improvement Plan Committee and provide a preliminary look at the needs and applicable costs for those needs of the school division. The administration will continue to evaluate and fine-tune the projects and alignment of the projects in preparation for presentation of the superintendent's proposed capital improvement plan in November. It is important to note that while we continue to be good stewards of taxpayer money, neglecting our buildings and failure to plan in the future could result in emergency cost or larger investments in the long run. The information presented tonight presents that of a working document that will evolve until the school board's approval in December and possibly even until a final adoption in May. Included at your seat is a spreadsheet showing the CIP Committee's recommended ten-year plan for your reference. Any additions to the current adopted plan are either highlighted in blue, highlighted in green, or, or items moved within the fiscal year. If highlighted in orange indicates a cost change. All costs have been escalated by six percent within the five years due to current market conditions. The process began this spring to ensure adequate time prior to the operating budget development to focus on the capital improvement plan. Principals were asked to submit requests for facility improvement this spring, and operations was asked to provide information on division-wide projects and routine maintenance schedules as well. The committee then reviewed and evaluated the requests to determine whether projects met the criteria to go forward as a capital improvement project. The Capital Improvement Plan Committee consisted of administrators at all three levels, Kimberly Grisco from Motoka, Michael Jarvis from Lafayette, and Jennifer Stanley from Blair. Several community members and central office support team members also contributed to the committee. I would like to thank Michael Willen, Randy Casey Rutland from Town Management, and Dan Pisanello from the Director of Facilities Planning and Design and Construction at Raymond Mary, who also were members of our committee. The committee met on two separate occasions in August and September. Information provided to the committee included enrollment projections as compared to building capacities. This information was from a year ago, as updated enrollment projections are not available until later this month. Project requests received from schools were also, was also a resource, and the current school board adopted capital improvement plan for fiscal years 23 through 32. The estimates for projects in the capital improvement plan included ten percent for A&E, five percent for contingency, and an annual escalation rate of three, of six percent per annum. A new project may appear in the CIP for the first time due to new or updated information, say, for example, new state requirements or mandates, or for safety reasons.
And sir, A&E stands for?
A&E stands for arch detection and engineering, which is the design.
Thank you.
As funding is appropriated annually, tonight, our initial focus is on fiscal year 24. We will review the changes for fiscal year 24 from the adopted fiscal year 23 five-year plan, and we will also review modifications to the current plan that may have arisen from need or changes in cost estimates. We recently enhanced the process for schools requesting facility improvement requests. Any items that did not meet the threshold are being considered and completed in the operating and maintenance budget, or determined not needed at this time or excluded and addressed immediately with plans to address it when funds become available. There were no requests that met the threshold of $50,000 to become a capital improvement plan project or were eligible for the review by the committee. Many of the requests submitted were part of the threat, risk, vulnerability assessment, which was presented and included in the request to the city and county. All refurbishment and replacement cycles remain the same, with the exceptions of those in red. The intercom, the life cycle of intercom systems is twenty years. The proposed fiscal year 24 projects are listed on the screen for your review. They are at Motoka, Stonehouse, Berkeley, Lafayette, Jamestown, and then there are numerous division items such as parking lots and playground and equipment. On this screen, you will see the recommended additions and changes from the fiscal year 24 through 33 plan proposed by the committee and their tier assignments. And the tiers are based on the priority ranking. Tier four is considered maintenance and aesthetics. Tier three is growth. Tier two is for education, and tier one is health and safety. At this time, Ms. Ewing will address with the others.
Thank you, Mr. Snipes. The CIP Committee's proposed five-year plan totals $104,902,000. In fiscal year 24, approximately $3.9 million will be funded through our state school construction grant entitlement that was approved as part of the general assembly's budget this year. We anticipate utilizing this funding towards the renovation of the 900-building at Lafayette High School. Some of the major projects included in the five-year plan include the construction of the Jamestown cafeteria expansion and renovation of the 900-building at Lafayette in fiscal year 24. and renovation of the nine hundred building at Lafayette in fiscal year twenty-four. Construction of preschool space also in fiscal year twenty-four and an expansion at War Hill in fiscal year twenty-eight. Next steps in the process include an opportunity for public comments on October eighteenth, followed by the presentation of the superintendent's proposed CIP on November first. At this time, we'd be happy to answer any questions that you may have.
I see Ms. Ordigo leaning in.
I just have a, a quick question because I couldn't hear. What is, what is tier three for again?
Tier three?
Oh, tier three is growth.
Growth, okay.
The others, Ms. Cook?
Mr. Chair, um, so I, I have, um, a few, so, um, I have a few comments because this isn't your recommendation yet, Dr. Herron, so I just wanna, um, make some comments based on what I'm seeing here. And, uh, and then I look forward to your, um, your recommendations. Um, actually, I, I do have one question, but, um, mostly comments. So I think, um, I like the added lines, um, uh, for safety and, and transportation at the end of, I think, division-wide. I, I like those additions. I am curious about the addition of buses and, and what our funders think about that. You don't have to answer that, but generally they've always wanted that to be in the operating because it's replacement. So, uh, uh, if you could, if you could inform us of that when you do your recommendation, that'd be great. Also, I, you know, every time I look at this, we are, um, tasked with putting forth, you know, a budget of need and we have to marry our needs with available resources in the community and what we reasonably think we, um, can be successful in, in, in getting for our students. Um, and so there are some things here. I was, you know, struck that there were no requests for, you know, for instance, um, that met that threshold. Um, and so sometimes I wonder if we under, under ask and, or understate what we need. And so specifically, uh, always around athletic facilities and then some traffic stuff that, um, you know, right, right now, typically we rely on V dot, for instance, for traffic signals. But if we want to, we could pay for those independently as a community and not wait for V dots. So when it comes to athletic facilities, whether it be additional, uh, fe, turf fields or, um, you know, aquatic facility, whatever, that's probably not in our future, but I, I always wish we would have a list of things that our students would benefit from, even if we're not asking. I, I, you know, I ask the same question every year about the, um, about the operating budget. I, I wish we would know what was left on the cutting room floor so that we can anticipate when we have year-end funds, what would be coming our way. You know, so it's sort of almost like a footnote, right? Um, it's, it's not really in the budget, but these are things that, that, um, would benefit our, our students. So I, I'd like to say that. And then, um, also, I just wanna comment that, um, as I travel the country, uh, I'm always, I always am, uh, amazed at how beautifully maintained our buildings are. Um, and so I'm just so grateful to Mr. Snipes and your hard work to make that happen. I know that you live and breathe that and I'm so grateful for our funders for allowing that. Um, I was earlier this last month in, um, the county with the highest tax rate in the country. And, uh, they're, I mean, our schools are so much nicer than theirs. Um, they're just well-maintained and they look, they're beautiful. And that's not the case in, uh, in, in this other place where I was. I'm hoping that for October eighteenth, we can really publicize that. We very rarely get any comments on our capital budget, so it'd be great to just try that again and see if people, um, you know, wanna come out and, and tell us what they think about, uh, our capital needs. And, um, uh, uh, so then actually I'd like to add two questions. So first, um, when is the facilities conditions index anticipated to be completed and how, how will that impact this CIP or is that next year's CIP?
Who would you like to respond?
It would be next year's CIP.
Okay, so that won't factor in this year at all. But we could anticipate seeing some sh, some shifts in response to that.
Think absolutely we could.
Okay, thank you. Um, and then also, Dr. Herron, are you in a position to share with the public what are, um, how our enrollment has looked, uh, so far this year, or would you rather have that coupled with what your, when you do your presentation? I'm just.
I can certainly give you an update on enrollment as of this week. Um, the projections of future enrollment will come in November when future think gives their predictions and, and projections for us. Uh, the data's now been transferred to them and they're doing that analysis, uh, during this month. Um, but so far, we have a, an additional two hundred and eighty-seven students in our school division this year, which is very encouraging. It's a bounce back from the pandemic totally. Uh, one hundred and forty of, forty-one of those are at the elementary level. Uh, eighty are at the middle school level and sixty-six are at the high school level. So our biggest increase again is at the elementary school level.
And how does that, how do those numbers, um, uh, when compared to what was projected, how do they align?
The overall number is above the highest projection.
By, do you, by?
Not sure I've got it right here. We can get it for you.
Okay.
It's on eleven, three oh five.
Yes, it's not far away.
I think the high projection was eleven, one sixty-six.
Uh, yep, actually you're right. I have it right here, eleven, one sixty-six.
So, okay, so how much higher than the highest?
We're eleven, three oh five right now.
About one hundred and thirty-nine above the high projection?
There were a hundred and, and we, you know, historically have been closer to the low projections, but we may be in a new.
Something has changed pretty dramatically this year. We have not seen this growth. Uh, this was normal ten years ago when I came to the division.
Okay. Thank you.
Ms. Young?
Yes, um, fir, first of all, I'm just going back to this CIP focus and information. One of the things that you've stated on here, uh, Mr. Snipes, was cost escalation across five years at the rate of six percent. Is that going to be enough? I mean, with the way inflation is and everything, is that, I mean, is that a realistic figure? That, that probably could be adjusted if it needed to be.
It could be, but we did, we did ask our, um, architects to check with their estimators and they gave us a result of six percent.
Six percent, okay, so.
If you recall, Ms. Young, normally it's three percent in our normal process and so we ask for input as to what it should be realistically this year. And so everything on the other years is escalated by six percent.
Okay, yes, thank you. I, I think that's, that's good because that, I've always thought three percent was kind of low and it's been workable, but right now, maybe not. Thank you.
Ms. Hunley and then Ms. Ordigo?
Okay, I just have three questions. So, um, first, I didn't know, what is a lift station generator? What is that?
It, it assists with sewage and pumping.
Okay.
Okay.
All right, and then sometimes it says schools will need tile and sometimes they need vinyl floors. So does that mean if you, if your school already had tiles, you're not moving to vinyl? You're just replacing tiles, but if you're doing a whole thing, we're going to vinyl? I, I'm just confused on this.
The descriptor could be a little more, you know, informative. Tile and vinyl are the same things. Um, at schools where we have rubberized flooring, it will definitely be a difference. For example, there's rubberized floor in Lafayette, there's rubberized floors in some other schools. So vinyl and tile is, are the same.
Okay, and my last question, I saw, um, sports field lights, so at an elementary school, but we pay for that. So, but the community's using it. I'm just confused. Does the county chip in some of that or?
I'll, I'll have to.
At Stonehouse, it says, um.
Yeah, I think there's a reference to sports field lights. Understone Heights.
Yeah, sports field. Um, first floor. I was just curious as to.
I will, I will get you an answer on those questions.
All right, thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Hunley. Ms. Ordigo?
Yeah, just going back quickly to, um, Ms. Cook's question about the increased enrollment. Do we have a sense if the, if this year's increase was students who had previously been enrolled in our schools, so coming back from homeschool or private school after the pandemic? Or are these primarily students who have never been enrolled in our school before?
Not sure I have the answer to that right now. I do know Ms. Bujor could speak a little bit to a decrease in homeschool enrollment. Uh, I know she's probably trying to bring it up as we speak.
Good evening. We have seen a decrease in homeschooling applications for this year as compared to last year. I'm trying to pull it up really quickly.
I think it would take a deeper analysis to work out who came last year and who didn't this year. That would take some time to go by individual family. But the numbers are less. Ms. Bujor, do you have them there?
Uh, at this time last year, we were at six hundred and twenty-five students for, um, home, that were being homeschooled, uh, compared to five hundred and fifty-nine this year.
You were able to get that pretty quickly. I wonder if you have for two thousand nineteen? If not, it's okay.
No, sir, my spreadsheet does not go back that far. I apologize. I can get it for you.
Great, yeah, thank you. Yeah, Ms. Hummel? I'm sorry, Ms. Ordigo? Ms. Ordigo, where are you? Okay, Ms. Hummel?
So, um, along, uh, with Ms. Hunley's question, I do remember there used to be, there was a big discussion about, um, school lights and field lights in the past, like a big discussion because there was inequity between different schools because of the county was using certain fields for practices and other schools didn't have the county using the fields. And so that, that is a concern, I think, of the school board to make sure that, that there is equitable lighting on our, uh, in our fields for, regardless of whether the county is using the fields for, um, sporting events. So it's just something to keep in mind. It was a big issue, I wanna say like, was it four years ago? Longer than that, yeah. I'm just trying, just, just to let you know that it was something that, that came up several years ago. With the, um, just question about the storm, storm drains. So since the, it's in blue, it means it's an addition. Is, is this just, I would assume we've had storm drain repairs all the time or, or are you envisioning that there's, there's something impending happening with storm drains that needs? Or like, is there a new Chesapeake Bay? I don't know. If you could just explain that a little bit.
Recently, and I say recently, it was back in March, we met with members of the county stormwater and researched and they had done a study to look at storm drains. And storm drains repair is usually about every fifty years. So can you imagine if a school was built in nineteen sixty-six? It's about time. Well, they gave us a recommendation for how to repair storm drains in our school system. So that's where that, that's where that came from. It came up in March.
We've just got these fifty-year-old schools that are rotating and we have to deal with it.
So we have a whole list of what is needed for our potential cost and this is to begin to, to do some of that work on an annual basis by putting a standardized number within the plan, but like our parking lots and things like that. We also reached out to, to the, our funding partners to understand and what piece of that is ours and what piece of that may be theirs. But this is a, a placeholder that we, we may have more information on when I present my plan.
And then my last question would be in the orange where it says indicates a change in amount. Am I to assume that they're all increases in a change in amount?
Yes, yes, my.
That's a great question. Um, yes, there are, there are increases in the change in amount either due to, um, a request from our to understand escalation on that project, or if the project is really, the scope has changed and it's, it's changed their cost.
So for example, in the playground repairs, there's some specific need for, for playground equipment for special education students. And so to add that, every year, we've increased that playground, uh, amount on an annual basis. I think our process, uh, that Mr. Snipes mentioned earlier in, in the year fiscal year twenty-four, that is up for our close consideration next year. We do have all of those project, projects reevaluated. There are one or two that are still coming in and they've been escalated by six percent while we wait on the actual new estimate. So there'll be some clarity and perhaps some minor changes in the next one as well.
Thank you.
Uh, Dr. Beers?
Yeah, I noticed, uh, on the sheet with the financial totals, uh, there's the asterisk there. That forty-six million, two hundred and eighty-five thousand. Um, and then that figure down below, three point nine million. Does the forty-six million include that? Or is that, or is that in addition to that?
The forty-six million includes that three point nine million. Yes, sir.
My, um, really one question at this point had ties back into Dr. Beers. That three point nine two nine five five four, very specific number, um, is that the entirety of the school construction grant entitlement that we'll be receiving?
Yes, sir.
Okay. And so it's not specific to any projects that we had to tell, um, general assembly or who, the powers that be, that we wanted to use the grant for?
No, each school division was provided, um, an allotment, um, based on their LCI as part of our funding through the state budget. And so that's our combined total for James City County and the city of Williamsburg.
Great, okay, thank you. Clearing that out for me. All right, uh, yeah, yeah, Ms. Ordigo?
Is, I, I mean, I guess we'll, we'll find this out soon enough in two weeks, but is, is the official recommendation likely to be very different from, from this?
I think there'll be some more information on the few things I've mentioned already, plus the pre, pre-K space construction. Uh, was it thirty-three million approved by the school board a year ago? And then that was reduced to twenty-five million by the city and county, our funding partners. Uh, that number will most likely change when we get, uh, more information from RRMM this week. We thought we'd have it already, but we're expecting it this week. So there'll be a little bit more clarity around that figure as well.
And to bring us all on the same page, you mind, uh, telling us what we're waiting for in respect to the architects?
Yes, we've had several iterations to consider and, uh, they are currently looking at the possibility of putting two pre-K centers in two elem, at two elementary school sites, holding two hundred and fifty students each to a total of five hundred students. So that would accommodate one hundred more students than we currently accommodate in our elementary schools.
Thank you, Dr. Herron. Any final questions around the CIP? We, it's not a formal recommendation yet, but as this is being built, any, any thoughts? Last chance, okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Snipes and Dr. Herron. All right, we're gonna move on to, uh, our second discussion item of the evening. Planning for school year twenty-three, twenty-four, for school tier and start times. I won't try to say that five times fast.
Thank you, thank you, Mr. Chair. I'm gonna hand right over to Mr. Kiefer, our chief operating officer this evening, to take us through a presentation of information and then potentially a, a discussion around this very important topic for next year. Thank you, Mr. Kiefer.
Thank you, Dr. Herron. Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. Uh, this evening. There you go. This evening, I want to do, uh, several things. I wanna remind you about some of the findings from the TransFinder study that we shared with the board in May of, uh, this year and some of the shifts that we made as a result of that study. Want to talk briefly about the financial implications with continued use of contracted services for transportation. Want to spend a few minutes, uh, with a high-level review of research related to adolescent sleep and school start times. And then also share some information around planning for the twenty-three, twenty-four school year. In May of twenty-two, uh, we shared with the school board the results of a study from TransFinder and TransFinder is the company that helps us with the transportation and routing. There were four primary recommendations that came forward as a result of that study. Uh, they encouraged us to look at our ridership data versus bus capacity and we have. They encouraged us to review routing efficiencies to include the home to stop distance that has increased this year. Uh, there was an encouragement to look at, uh, transportation pause for non-riders. We put that in place. And then the fourth recommendation was to review tier times and placement level of tiers. Uh, when we shared this with the board in May, there was some sentiment that we consider that for the upcoming school year. But we felt like that might be, uh, a little bit more challenging for the community than we were ready to tackle. So what we did do was to make some slight shifts to our current start and end times for school and also made a modification with respect to the number of schools in tier three versus tier four at the elementary level. What you see in front of you now are the actual stop and end times across the four tiers. And I wanna speak a little bit to the, the data in the parentheses. Uh, at the middle school level, we've been able to increase our on-time afternoon percentages by almost thirty percent with some of the shifts that we made, uh, last spring and planning for this. with some of the shifts that we made, uh, last spring in planning for this year. We've seen almost a thirteen percent increase in on-time in tier three. And then we're up in the ninety percent range for tier four in terms of on-time percentages. That work is related directly to the amount of time and effort spent in the transportation office. It's related to the fact that we've utilized and continue to utilize contracted transportation services through ALC EverDriven. Uh, we've done stop consolidations. We've lengthened the home-to-stop distances. And we've had a very modest use of non-transportation zones. We feel good about those shifts, but recognize that we can get even better. On the contracted services front, in terms of transportation, you may recall that in July of twenty-twenty-one, we asked the school board for permission to sign a contract with ALC at the time to the tune of one point one million dollars that would assist us in being able to cover for a number of runs that we could not cover relative to our bus driver shortage. The funding for that was split between ESSER grant funds and, uh, the operating budget. And specifically with the operating budget, it's the transportation, uh, and salaries and benefits line item. So that, that was funded in that capacity. And as we reported to you last spring, approximately seventy students were a part of that in the twenty-one, twenty-two school year. Through some of the shifts that I was able to just share with you in the twenty-two, twenty-three school year, we currently have forty-eight students that are being served. Uh, but we did ask the board last May to go ahead and approve a contract for one point two-six million dollars, allowing us to continue utilizing contracted services. And that, that particular version of the contract, we are estimating nearly five hundred thousand dollars with grant funding and another eight hundred thousand through the operating budget. Um, we're three weeks in, uh, that we, there, there's still a long way to go in terms of the school year. And I don't want to jinx us, but we do feel like we'll be utilizing less in this particular school year, twenty-two, twenty-three, than we did in twenty-one, twenty-two in terms of contracted services. I'm sharing this with you also to let you know that we don't feel like financially this is a, a very stable scenario for us as a school division. The grant funding sunsets in September of twenty-twenty-four. So there may be an additional year of grant funding, the twenty-three, twenty-four school year. But that we would not necessarily have that same option within the twenty-four, twenty-five school year. Uh, and we do anticipate needing to use some contracted services in the, in the next year or two. But would like to be able to bring as much of our transportation system in-house. One of the ways to do that is to revisit and review our tier structures. And in revisiting and reviewing our tier structures, uh, the, the most efficient way for us to structure our transportation system is to also meet what is currently being reported in science as the order of schooling for students. And there is a significant body of research that is available and has emerged over the last decade and a half relative to adolescents and their sleep patterns and sleep times, uh, vice the time that school starts in the morning for high school and middle school students. In twenty-fourteen, the American Academy of Pediatrics released a policy statement, uh, that detailed pretty specifically thoughts around the insufficient sleep in adolescents and the idea that it was a public health issue. There was a sense from the American Academy of Pediatrics that, uh, shifting start times, there would be potential benefits with regard to physical, mental health, safety and academic achievement. Center for Disease Control also suggests that schools with adolescents have a start time of eight-thirty AM or later, which would allow for students to be able, uh, especially adolescent students, be able to accumulate the amount of sleep they need per evening. Somewhere in the neighborhood between eight and ten hours. Number of studies have been released. Um, I'm going to share with you just four. Uh, you, you could spend most of the next several days poring through studies on adolescent sleep times and school start times. Uh, I've picked these four studies just as illustrative of the, the general overall findings. Journal of School Health reported in twenty sixteen that with a, even a modest change in school start times, it increased the weeknight sleep duration among adolescents. It would, it also, that those later start times at school generally corresponded to improved attendance, less tardiness, less falling asleep in class and fewer motor vehicle crashes for drowsy drivers. Uh, there was a study that I've not mentioned here that I'll reference for you that was done within the south side of Virginia by a, a sleep doctor on, at EVMS who looked specifically at two school divisions, again on the south side, measuring, uh, student driver vehicle crashes, um, versus start times. And found that there were a significantly larger number of student vehicle issues in, in the morning in a district that started significantly earlier than the other. I can't necessarily mention the districts, but I'll certainly give you the study. The other piece I wanted to mention is Journal of Clinical Sleep Medicine, the position statement from twenty-seventeen, again suggesting that, um, early, middle school and high school start times curtail sleep and hamper our students' preparedness to learn. Two additional pieces, uh, one by Dr. Pam McKeever, uh, out of Central Connecticut State. In twenty sixteen, talked about the, understanding the relationships between adequate amount, amounts of sleep and daytime functioning, uh, leading to improved attendance and graduation rates. And then to me, one of the most interesting studies available is a study that was done as a result of a shift in start times in Seattle, Washington. Seattle Public Schools, uh, shifted their start times. And, and this particular study looked at students by way of sleep monitors and the amount of sleep that were occurring for those students on a nightly basis uh, versus those that did not switch their, or have their time shifted. And this particular study found that in shifting the times from seven-fifty to eight-forty-five, there were measurable benefits for the students involved, reduced sleepiness, increased academic performance, et cetera. This is not to say that, that there, um, that, that making this shift is a simple, easy thing to accomplish. It is a, a challenge for any school division to look at shifting start times. It's a, it's a change of monumental proportion. Uh, but I do want you to know that across the Commonwealth of Virginia, and this might be a little small, but hopefully you have it presentation there for you, there are a number of school divisions that utilize laser, later start times at the high school and middle school level, uh, to include Chesapeake, Suffolk and Hampton. Uh, Loudoun County actually starts high school at nine-thirty AM. Fairfax, you may be familiar with, based on a decade-long effort to shift their start times, was able to move the high school start time to eight-ten AM. Chesterfield starts at eight-thirty, Henrico's at nine AM and Alamoorals at eight-fifty-five AM. I share that with you to, so that you know that there are other school divisions that have either gone through this process or have had, had these start times in place. The other surrounding school divisions around us have a, have what we could consider the current normal start time at high schools with high school in the earlier tier. So I, we've got that data as well, but I didn't share that with you tonight because it more closely matches the, the times that we currently utilize in Williamsburg, James City County. The final slide I want to share with you this evening might give you a sense that if we were to move forward with the shifting of our tier times, what it could look like, again, matching the suggestion from TransFinder with the current staffing scenarios and taking into consideration the adolescent sleep research. Uh, a proposed schedule might look something like this. Tier one elementary, seven-twenty-five to one-fifty-five PM. Elementary tier two, eight oh five AM to two-thirty-five PM. High schools starting at eight-forty-five and concluding at three-twenty-five. And middle school starting at nine-thirty with a conclusion at four-ten. Want you to be aware that, uh, later today, we are sharing this information with our community. This is, you know, a public meeting. There are probably people listening in now. We are creating a mechanism to be incredibly transparent with the idea that we're even looking at this. Because we recognize that change, uh, is difficult for folks and we want to give people an opportunity to understand the rationale. So a little bit later this afternoon, maybe in the next hour or so, we'll be sharing with our community that the fact that we presented this, we've put a potential time out there, but this time or this timing structure in no way represents a final decision. It is only illustrative to give you a sense of what the tiering may look like. I'll stop there and we can turn it over to some discussion and questions.
Mr. Kiefer and turn myself back on. Thank you, Mr. Kiefer. And while this isn't a formal recommendation, I think, uh, just to kind of help the board understand how to develop your questions or comments, um, I would ask you to consider uh, for yourselves, if this is something that you as a board member want to ask the superintendent to formulate a formal, uh, recommendation in a future meeting. Uh, do we have any questions? I'm sure we do. Dr. Beers?
Just, yeah, just, um, quickly, uh, looking at, uh, tier one and two. If we had more buses and more bus drivers, could we have tier one and two start at the same time?
Dr. Beers, we've done it, just a very quick initial look at that. And, and we believe it would be in the neighborhood of about twenty-two, twenty-three, twenty-four drivers necessary.
And how much money is that? Is it the same?
Well, the, the, we have, currently, we're using eight hundred thousand dollars of unused transportation salary to help pay for contracted services. We may have the FTEs available within the current transportation budget in order to get that accomplished. The, the more pressing question is, I, I don't know if we've ever been staffed at that level before. And it, it feels like, and I, I don't, I don't want to be, um, negative, but it feels like a bridge too far to, to feel like we could get to that plus twenty-four, twenty-five driver scenario.
Ms. Hummel?
I want to go back to the contracted transportation services, just so I understand it. So for twenty-three, twenty-four, we're going to not have these grant funds. Is that right? They go away September of twenty-twenty-three, did you say?
It, those, it sunsets in September of twenty-twenty-four.
Okay, oh, okay, so we'd still have one more academic year?
Potentially, yes, ma'am.
Okay, because I'm, I mean, I'm doing my quick, high-level math here. And for forty-eight students, one point two-six million dollars, that's twenty-six thousand dollars per student, correct? Wow.
Costs us more this year than it did last year at seventy students, right?
And it's going, yes.
Reiterate, you're, the one point six-two-six million was the estimate to transport seventy students to transport twenty-six. However, it's going to be less.
We, we do think it'll be less, but we did have the contract approved by you for one point two-six estimating on what we did last year. So the, your, your approval of that contract was related to our estimate of what we may need. To this point, three weeks in, we are utilizing it less than we did last year. That money's still allocated for that purpose.
And does the way this contract work, is, does it work in that regardless of whether we're, is it a per-student-use basis?
Per trip.
It's per trip.
Per trip, so, and we're not looking truly at twenty-six thousand dollars.
At the quarantine, we're spending about six thousand dollars a day to transport those twenty, I can't remember how we need, forty-eight.
Forty-eight.
Forty-eight students. So we're estimating with a hundred and sixty, some odd days left, close to a million dollars.
And so that's just, we just can't hire the drivers and that's why.
We, we, we are, we, we have seen an uptick in applicants, but we aren't seeing an uptick enough to make a dramatic impact. Because if we gain a driver, sometimes we lose a driver and that's just the nature of the business.
Part of the other challenge in this scenario is we, we've tried to utilize this transportation for specialized cases. Uh, instead of using a driver and a bus to deliver someone, uh, we've, we've tried to utilize a car because that bus could accommodate forty-five, fifty students. Uh, and the car could accommodate far fewer than that. So there, there is a, there's a trade-off there as well.
Okay, so, all right, I just was kind of shocked about that. But, and I, I know we talked about it. I know we kind of like didn't have a lot of choice about it. But it's still kind of a shocking, you're looking at it and you're going, wow, for that much money, really pay the bus drivers a much bigger, like, give them more money and maybe we'll get more bus drivers, but it's, I know it's really complicated, so. My second question is, um, when I look at this tier structure, and by the way, I support what you guys are trying to do. I, I support the study, I support the flip, all of that. Um, when I look at this as a parent of a elementary school, I, two working parents, typical start time of eight o'clock, they'd have them on the bus before that. So really what they're really looking at is getting rid of before care. Is that correct? And they would just have after care at the schools? Is that kind of the reality for parents?
I think it's going to depend. Uh, so as, as an example, um, in another division with which I'm familiar, there's before care and after care. And if the, if the schools change their times, it changes the, the number of spaces needed at the particular school. So there may be far less need for before care and more of a need for after care. And that service delivery model would need to be revised in order to accommodate the additional need.
And then I, I'm assuming our partners for providing that before and after care are, are tuned in to all of this and, uh, will be, uh, have advanced notice to be able to.
We, if, if, if we move forward with a plan to shift the tiers, we would absolutely want to work with, um, James City County Rec Connect in order to best understand the necessary services.
And then timing-wise, because I didn't see that in here, what is the, the timing-wise for making a decision about this? Uh, we're going to have ample opportunity for the community to weigh in. Uh, but then what is our idea for kind of making a decision? Yeah, we're going to go for this. Like, what time of the year? And how much, does, how much advanced planning time does that give to the community once we make the decision?
Basically, as early as possible. Um, we do want to methodically think about it. Um, if we were to plan for next year, we want to be sometime in January at the very latest, uh, to give ample time. And, um, I think that is something else for, for us to consider.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Hummel. Ms. Young and then Ms. Artigo.
Yes, uh, thank you. I also support, uh, the, the time change, especially for our high school students. Um, I, I just had a question about the, about the contracted bus service. Does, do any of those, um, I don't know, maybe Mr. Snipes can answer or, or Mr. Kiefer. But this, the, the cars and vans that are being, there are cars and vans both, right, being used, utilized? So are, are, is some of that contracted service being used for McKenney-Vento students?
Yes, some of that contracted service is, is being used for McKenney-Vento.
And, and what is the further student that we're providing transfer, transportation for?
I can get you that answer because off the top of my head, I couldn't.
The reason I'm asking is a few years ago, we were going, I think, to Charlotte, not to Charlottesville, to Richmond, to pick up a student to provide services. So I'm just asking about that. Um, I mean, and my other question, if this, this happens, it kind of negates what, uh, flipping of tiers to accommodate our elementary teachers. Because I think this would basically do it, where they would be able to get to doctor's appointments and, and other services. I think that's basically my question. I am concerned about that early seven-twenty-five start for, um, elementary students. So how many students, what would be the earliest that a student would have to be on the bus?
We're still looking closely at that. And based on, uh, an initial review, um, I, I, I would, before I start throwing numbers out there, I, I would want to look carefully at the numbers per five-minute increments, beginning somewhere in the six-thirty AM range. But I'm, I'm not prepared to tell you right now that the first stop will be X and the last stop would be Y.
Okay, yes, thank, thank you, Mr. Kiefer. Thank you, Marcellus.
Uh, Ms. Artigo and then Dr. Beers.
I was actually going to ask the same thing Ms. Young just asked about the, the earliest time an, an elementary school student would have to get on a bus. Because, um, you know, in, say, January, a, a child's not going to walk themselves to a bus stop necessarily. And that's just, you know, that's, the elementary school kids can't handle that, the same as high school students doing that on their own. So that would be, that would be interesting to know and how, you know, what's the longest bus run that we're, that an, an elementary school student would, would do.
Right. Ms. Artigo, just, just before you ask the next question, one of the things that I think that we would, if, if we were to move forward really looking at this in earnest, want to bring back and, and share with folks would be a breakdown going to that that I just mentioned in five-minute increments, numbers of, numbers of students impacted in terms of bus stop arrival time. Uh, recognizing that that will be based on this year's current students, but it would be indicative of what we could anticipate in future years. And to suggest per run, as built out, what's the longest amount of time? We, we can get that information together. We'll need a little bit more time. We we can get that information together, we'll need a little bit more time to do that. I didn't I didn't mean to cut you off, but I'll, we we do, we do intend to bring that back.
Okay, um, and then I just have a couple other questions real quick. One, one county that I didn't see on this comparison chart is York County, which is another, which is a county that is similarly, has similar geography in terms of being sort of long. Do we know what what they do, do they have similar issues with their busing?
They're, they use a similar start time to what we use right now.
Okay, um, do we, do we anticipate bus utilization to change drastically or or at all, like?
Do you mean in terms of who's using a bus when?
Maybe, you know, do, is there, maybe there's no way to know until you start, until you do it. But if, you know, if if thinking of a two-parent working household, maybe they would be more likely to drive a child if it's earlier or.
I think that's a a very appropriate wondering, and I think that one of the scenarios is is to, it moving this forward might be to, yes, in the morning that may happen, but in the afternoon, is that a possibility? And so you still plan the route out to incorporate the student in the afternoon. So so one of the things that I I think we potentially would see is that fewer elementary students may utilize morning transportation, but would need it in the afternoon, whereas right now in the high school realm, we have more high school students using it in the morning and fewer using it in the afternoon. So I I think you start to see a flip in pattern. Uh, it's a little bit challenging to get definitive information from folks on that, but I think you could anticipate a a shift in pattern.
Okay, then my last question is, um, have we looked at combining or creating tiers based on geography and not based on school level? So not having all elementary across the district be one or two titles, but grouping base, grouping all three levels of school based on geography?
Not not during my tenure necessarily have we looked at that. It it is something that we could explore. I I will say that when when that starts to happen, uh, you do potentially lose out on the sharing of resources in terms of the personnel pieces. Uh, if a high school teacher teaches in one building on an A day and another building on a B day, but the high school times are related to the um, to the location within James City County, it becomes more difficult to be able to share said resources.
Sorry, it was my dog.
I thought they may not like the answer. I I wasn't sure.
Okay, uh, who did I say was next? I apologize. Dr. Beers and then Ms. Cook?
Yeah, I uh, I completely uh support this new structure. I think it's way, way long overdue. Um, especially, uh, I'm I'm particularly concerned about the high school uh and and middle school students. But uh, the research is very clear, always has been, um, and it's really come down to, uh, we we bite the bullet and and follow that line, um, and and I think it's really important for the uh, for the health and the academic um abilities of our uh students. I'm still playing with these numbers, uh, Mr. Kiefer, and 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 I'm thinking, all right, what if we, for that tier one, we went to seven forty-five? And for tier two, we we took some of that away so that they started to be at the same time, like seven forty-five. And I'm probably, you've probably done that, but I thought I'd just toss it out there.
Well, at the elementary level, I believe our school day is six hours and thirty minutes. Uh, at the high school, middle school level, it's six hours and forty minutes. We we have shifted that at the high school, middle school level down slightly this particular year. That's given us more time for teachers to collaborate after school, also created a little bit more gap time between the tiers for us. Um, the more we compress the time between the tiers, the harder it is for us to do things on time. Uh, unless there are more and more drivers available to us. We will want to, within the transportation team, look as closely as possible at how much can we compress the gap times without creating a scenario where nobody's getting anywhere on time, right?
Um, the and do you also take into consideration the number of parents who are taking their kids to school and picking them up right now?
That, that's a little hard to judge, sure, there there are lines, right? And and I think that perhaps we could consider, you have to sign up for transportation. And if if you don't sign up for transportation, we have not built you into the routes. I, that's, that's something that is, that is possible. I think that theoretically, that makes sense. I think the practical uh operationalizing of that is much more cumbersome to deliver on. Uh, because on rainy days, I wanna ride, and on dry days, I don't. On Tuesdays and Thursdays, I have practice after school, and on Mondays, Wednesdays and Fridays, I don't, I need transportation. So it it's kind of working through all of those various scenarios. I I do think a shift like this will change who gets a ride to school in the morning and and who needs or transportation in the afternoon, um, a little bit different than what it does right now for us.
And Dr. Beers, your question, typically, when we tell parents that, they're gonna sign up for transportation. It's there, everybody will sign up for transportation, and then it creates where our routers are having to redo routes almost every day because our drivers are coming back telling us that students aren't at the routes, they're at the stops, so.
Ms. Cook?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I um, very excited about this and have waited eight years for Ellie to have this discussion in earnest. Um, I mean, as Dr. Beers said, the research is really quite clear and compelling, and I think it's better for all of our kiddos. Uh, the little ones who are ready to go uh early in the morning, and then the older ones who um, who are a little bit bleary-eyed in the morning, so I think it'll help everybody um come to school ready to learn, so I absolutely support this. Um, uh, I I guess I have, um, nowhere to start. So I I'm kind of scanning our policies, and I can't find anything that suggests to me that this actually requires school board action. Um, and so I'd like, um, I I guess we should ponder that, so, cause it seems to me that this is an administrative decision. Uh, and and I again, can't find any policy to to counter that. So I think we should have a public discussion. I absolutely think we should ponder community input. I think community input should be shared in a public setting at a work session, not only individual community input, but as um Ms. Hummel indicated, um, also institutional community input, whether that's our funding partners who operate programs or even other daycare providers who provide transportation on our behalf, you know, for our kiddos. Um, but uh anyway, so I just think we need, I want an absolutely public and transparent process. But I think we should, I don't even know if this requires a board, board action. Um, it seems administrative in nature to me, but um, if you, I don't know. If policies are not clear on that, or I can't find anything that suggests start times um are in our purview. Um, but I would, again, appreciate really robust community inputs. Um, and a- also, um, I guess if we could get an elementary ex- uh explanation, uh, Mr. Kiefer, you you talked about this has financial ramifications, it has health and well-being ramifications. I think you did a very good job of um, showing the studies uh on 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 sleep and the importance of sleep, especially in the adolescent, um, for adolescents, and then the contract. But can you, can you help clarify why flipping the schedules might save money? Cause I don't think that is is clear, and I know it's complex, but can you, can you kind of explain that for the average listener, please?
I can try. The the elementary routing scenario are, they're often shorter routes, more compact routes. Um, the elementary attendance areas are smaller in nature than the middle school and high school attendance areas. And one of the things that that we find is that um, it will, it will take fewer routes and runs to be covered if we make the shift. So for instance, in in a, in our current scenario, we need somewhere in the neighborhood of seventy-five to eighty runs covered on a daily basis. And when I say runs, I'm really kind of talking about drivers. And this flipped scenario, uh, just initial look through our transportation team, our number came back at sixty-four, sixty-five routes. So it's it's the need for fewer drivers to cover the runs because of their order and the ability to get from point A to point B to point C and deliver students. So it, there is a personnel cost savings with making this shift, because you need fewer drivers in order to get that accomplished.
Um, also, it would be, thank you very much. It would be wonderful to uh understand what, if any, impact this might have on field trips and other sort of extracurricular transportation. Um, and and if that has a negative impact, um, that may be a trade-off worth making, but it'd be good to be very transparent about that. Um.
And I can, I can tell you that initially, we feel like field trips would sort of follow the same pattern where uh transportation would be available towards the end of the last tier drop-off in the morning. So field trips somewhere in the neighborhood of nine forty-five to ten AM start and ending at about one PM, one thirty. One, that's probably too late, one fifteen PM to get back to their elementary for drop-off. So same, same realm or rationale that we're currently utilizing for field trips. Uh, after-school activity runs somewhere in the neighborhood of five PM would be the the thought right now.
So what, like, so after-school clubs for like, um, for elementary school would still be able to take place as as anticipated?
We we would have to work through that. I I think that from our perspective administratively, we we would not necessarily wanna bring forward any type of plan that would limit student opportunity. I think that's the fairest way for me to say it.
I I wanna say that I've visited uh uh several schools recently and heard from a a handful of administrators that the new schedule is working well and that everything's on time, and so.
It's great.
It um, it helps with planning, uh, and I, you know, I think, um, I I, it's probably nothing to be done by it, by it, but I do want, looking at these times and listening to earlier today, I am compelled by the um, just the reality that some teachers can go to medical appointments and don't have to take leave, and some teachers do. I I, that's unfortunate, um, and I wish there was a solution to that. Um, and I also wish that we could just compress to three tiers. Um, that would just solve a lot of problems, but I recognize that's not within our reality right now, so. Anyway, thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Ms. Cook. Uh, Ms. Hunley, and then I'll take a moment before we circle back around. Ms. Hunley?
Yes, so I'm I'm also in support of the tier system um switch. And I know it's it's foreign and it's a challenge, but it's an opportunity for student success. And other divisions have done it, and I would just encourage, as I know Ms. Young and I Googled, um, their videos that kind of um answer some of the questions we have. And um, I know a lot of us may have um family members or other people that live in the other divisions that are doing this. And I think it would be great to ask them questions and, you know, like with the childcare and things like that, how did you work it out? Do you carpool? Um, you know, it's almost like, I know we may get a lot of communities, um, people coming out with more, you know, when it's something this foreign, a criticism. But if you think of two positive things, um, and then come with the negative, or that would be helpful. To me, creative, like, there's, I know there's a lot of creative minds out there. For me, it's hard because I am not an auditory person, I'm a visual person, so I don't, I need to see it in action, how it works, or I need to talk to someone and they explain to me, this is what we did to get over that. Oh yeah, we had that before. So I would encourage people to talk to other folks that have gone through this um tier switch. And um, if, before you come forth and find all the things that wouldn't work, find out what does work in the other divisions.
Thank you, Ms. Hunley. Um, I as well, I am very supportive of seeing the administration pursue this and getting out um more of your own questions answered through research. And I greatly appreciate the research that's already gone into it. Um, and I find uh that what you've shared, Mr. Kiefer, in your research, I I find that to be true in our own household. You know, having um three kids uh in WJCC public schools, uh, beginning at Norwich. Um, you know, always wondered why they had to wait the longest to get to school, and they're already, they're well up before me. Um, so uh now having high schoolers, and they're not up before me. Well, I I have to take that back, some of them are. But uh, you know, and then one high schooler, she is driving, I won't name her name, but she is driving, and it it, you know, she plays sports. And this is um similar to so many other parents and numerous other parents uh in our division, where they've got students that are driving, they, students that play sports, and they're working, and they're writing papers in the middle of the night because they're just so busy. Um, it it is a bit concerning, you know, knowing that they're getting behind the wheel on a foggy morning. Um, and you just wanna make sure that they get there safely. Uh, so uh, there are a number of other reasons why this is supported by me, but I appreciate the research that's gone into it to this point. Um, a few questions, and actually, um, if I, if I can um maybe address Ms. Cook's concern about it being administrative decision, administrative in nature, I agree with that. Um, perhaps not actionable by the board at all, and one of the things that Dr. Heron and I had discussed was, you know, what does the board present? So it's a big change that we're asking the community to trust the division and trust the research and trust that this wasn't a flippant decision. Um, it wasn't developed in September twenty-three, twenty-two, excuse me, it was long before May third of twenty twenty-two. And so um, a lot has gone into this decision. Um, and so because it's such a big decision that affects our community stakeholders and families, um, perhaps there's a a device that the school board could implement to show support that yes, we agree that this is a direction the school division should go, and perhaps that device is a board resolution. I don't know if that would be reasonable or even permissible, but that's something I wanted to lay out there for this board to consider. As it sounds like we've suggested to Dr. Heron and her staff that, yeah, we would like to see more on this. So perhaps a board resolution to say, yeah, this is something we want, we want our school division to do, and we support it. Um, a few questions, uh, and you kind of touched on this in one of your most recent answers, Mr. Kiefer. But um, can you talk about the, if the response to early release times? And in particular with weather, we just had one um that was unscheduled, uh provoked by a a potential, you know, a hurricane touching parts of, you know, Virginia. So can you talk about early release and how that has factored in?
I would say that we would utilize a very similar process to what we utilize now, where we would build out an early release schedule related to the start and end times for each of the the various tiers if we may, if we adjusted going forward. Um, so right now, high school currently releases in the eleven o'clock timeframe. Eleven thirty, I think you could anticipate a very similar release right down the line in this particular scenario.
Um, i- am I right to assume, I, maybe you mentioned it, but that tier one would uh contain a majority of elementary schools, is that how these tiers would work?
Right now, our initial look is around a a more equitable five-four split or four-five split. My math might be off in terms of which one leads, it's it's not what we're, currently the way we're looking at it is not how we've got them positioned with uh two and tier three and seven and tier four, it's more balanced.
Uh, this question's already been beaten up, I think, a few times uh on, um, I think someone, one of the members uh said, asking parents, would you drop off or would you want uh rider services? Um, I recall, uh, and this was pre-shut down, um, that as a parent, we were asked to provide a survey, um, is that still occurring? And is that a tool that would be used in the communication with parents?
It could, it could, it is something that we do, and it could be a tool that we use in communication with parents. I I think most parents by default will select transportation, even if there is not an intent to utilize the transportation.
I heard that, and that just boggles my mind, I mean.
Cause that's the reserve that you have in the event, well, in the event that on a particular day, it doesn't work for you to be able to to transport. It's it, so in general, we we try to create routes based on the greatest number possible. Because that, that's the safest thing for us to do in in the routing scenario.
And then uh, Ms. Hummel, she um asked and talked about bus driver pay. And then uh Ms. Hummel, she um asked and talked about bus driver pay. Um just to kind of piggyback on that, can you? Are you prepared to share with us what efforts have been made to make driving with WJCC schools a little bit more profitable for bus drivers?
Last year, we took ver- we took, we took very specific steps in the beginning part of last year and raised every bus driver. Salary by a dollar and a quarter. Uh we subsequently included drivers and and members of transportation in the seven percent raise that the board. Uh afforded to all WJCC employees. We looked specifically at uh the transportation team in terms of an internal equity review. I I I think that we have been more and more competitive in terms of driver salary. There are specific requirements in order to obtain a c- commercial driver's license. That many people di- did not wanna go through and do, and I think that's an inhibitor. Not that we want people to not be drivers to 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 have a CDL, but that's an inhibitor. That you don't necessarily need to have for some other jobs, even within the school division.
One of the things we've also done is we have a signing bonus for our drivers as well when they sign on. Would they sign on with the CD or without a CDL for our specialty drivers, so we've.
What does that signing bonus look like?
It's a six hundred dollar signing bonus for if you get atta- attain your CDL and a four hundred dollar signing bonus if you become what we call a specialty driver for us. We did ask to increase it in next year's budget to eight hundred and six hundred.
Great. Thank you, Mister Snipes, Mister Keever. Uh Ms. Ortega and then Ms. Hummel.
Yeah, I I wanna circle back to something that was that was discussed at the beginning, which is um and it kind of had to do with. Cook's question about how this would save money, and I understand the answer for the regular bus routes, how does this relate to? The one point two million dollar contract per se?
It allows us to to utilize the the drivers that we currently have on staff to pick back up some of those special runs. That right now we're contracting out.
Like, so they would just have more time after their initial run or before, I mean.
Maybe they would have more time, ma- we have a certain number of drivers. And and the numbers that I've quoted so far in terms of the sixty-four, sixty-six are general education, they're not our special education drivers. We've got another uh twenty or so that that do special education driving. So so one of the scenarios for us is that. If if we have to, if we have fewer runs to cover, we have more drivers to be able to put. Back towards some of the special routing scenarios that we currently have not been able to cover and thereby need contracted services.
But do we expect then to not need a- any contracted services?
We we feel like there are some warranted cases of contracted services. Singleton students going to a program in Richmond or a single student going to a program in Newport News or Hampton. We don't feel like we should utilize a bus and a driver for that. We, so there will be some. Very modest amount of contracted services, but we would, we would like to move away from that in in general.
So like approximately for out of an eight hundred thousand dollar, you know, line item and operating budget, what would that go down to?
Hard for me to, on the spot, address that. We could look, Ms. Ortega, at at some of our more uh unique situations. To to give a sense of what that might project out to over the course of a year.
Ms. Ortega, this is Mister Snipes responding. We also have to consider that McKinney-Vento can create some issues for us, which we would need that, that. Those services as well, and that's hard to under- know what's gonna happen every year for McKinney-Vento students as well.
I didn't hear the first part of what you said.
I'd said the McKinney-Vento students also creates an issue, cause we don't know who those students are gonna be each year. And we don't wanna take a bus to somewhere where we could also be using ALC ever driven for that student as well.
What I think we would articulate, Ms. Ortega, in in budget planning would be a specific line item in the transportation budget for contracted services. That previously prior to twenty twenty-one did not exist. Uh we would, we would look to build that into the budget in order to accommodate some of those very specialized needs that we've described tonight.
And the idea is that it would be significantly reduced, right?
Yes.
Right?
Yes, yes, ma'am.
Yes.
Yes.
And then the the grant funds, I think you said we'd have one more year of that, if we implemented this next year, say, just hypothetically. What what would happen to those grant funds?
I think we already have designs on those. Currently, right now, those those grant funds are not allocated for transportation. If if we. Didn't make this shift, we would need to edit our grant uh application to accommodate this or. Would have to ask our funding partners for additional funds to cover this, to the tune of probably half a million dollars.
Ms. Ortega, um I wanna ask you, are you prepared to support the division pursuing this uh? To see if it's a likely endeavor? Um Ms. Hummel and then Ms. Cook.
My question has to do with New Horizons and how um how the students that are. Attending New Horizons in high school, their junior and senior year, how it fits in with this new structure. And because I don't see on the sampling of school operating hours, I know New Horizon follows Newport News.
They do.
So I, and I didn't see their times on here, so I just, that was my question.
Newport News is currently in the the same realm that we're in in terms of start times with a seven twenty start for high school. Hampton is a part of that New Horizons piece, they have a later start time for high school. We would, we would need to work with New Horizons and our students to be able to plan that out. So off the cuff, I don't wanna, we would work to not inhibit our students being able to participate in that program, even if that meant. That in order to participate in New Horizons, you may have to start your day earlier. Does that make sense?
Yeah, you'd have to start your date earlier and then you might have some dead time.
We would have to work through a scheduling model, that's right.
Study hall, an extra study hall. Um, yeah, no, I just wanted to circle back to the process thing. I I mean, I I it was really a question that just occurred to me. While I was listening, so I I I think, you know, just straw pull is fine, I think resolution is fine. Having no policy doesn't preclude us from taking action anyway. I just wanted to be clear about that, it was really just a question and just trying to be intentional. About um what we're doing and, you know, because there was a shift this year um. And tha- that didn't, that was just an update, right? So I just thought I would pose the question, cause it occurred to me, um so. But I think any way is fine and defer to you to work through that, I just wanted to be clear about that.
Thank you, Ms. Cook. All right, I think we've had a lot of questions answered. Thank you for all your detailed uh. Answers and just the research that went into this. I understand that a proverbial pause button was pushed. Uh to see if this was something that the board would support, and you definitely have that from this the school board, Dr. Heron.
Thank you.
All right, so we're gonna move on to item eight point one. On, I think we have six policies. Um so item eight point zero one, review of revisions to policy JHCC slash GBEC. Communicable diseases.
Thank you, Mister Chair. We've got Ms. Fowler, Supervisor of Health Services here this evening to present, I believe, the first three policies. Thank you.
Thank you. Good evening, Mister Chair, Dr. Heron and members of the board. Policy JHCC slash GBEC communicable diseases was last revised in October of two thousand and seventeen. The policy remains in alignment with the current V SBA policy with one minor revision recommended to line seven. In which the capital B was changed to a lowercase b. No other changes are recommended at this time, and I'm happy to answer any questions you might have.
We should have started with this one. But thank you for being here.
Yes.
Any questions for Ms. Fowler? Is it Dr. Fowler?
It is not Dr. Fowler.
All right, thank you, Ms. Fowler. Are you here for eight oh two, right? Review revisions to policy JHCD administering medication to students.
There are several revision revisions uh recommended to policy JHCD administering medications to students. Which was last revised in June of two thousand and sixteen. To align with current V SBA policy, lines four through nine are deleted. Lines seventy-three through seventy-seven are recommended for deletion because the school division cannot impose. Those two additional requirements for self-carey and self-administration of medication for students diagnosed with diabetes. Under Virginia Code twenty-two point one dash two seven four point zero one one A. The school board shall permit each student who is diagnosed with diabetes. With parental consent and written approval from the prescriber to carry and self-administer insulin and check blood glucose levels. Lines seventy-eight through eighty-five have been added to align with V SBA policy. Concerning the insertion or reinsertion of an insulin pump or any of its parts. It should be noted that the policy clearly states that this requires prescriber authorization and parental consent. And that nothing in this policy requires an employee to assist with the insertion or reinsertion of the pump or any of its parts. Lines one twenty-two through one thirty-one have also been aligned with V SBA policy. Concerning undesignated stock epinephrine for emergency treatment of signs and symptoms of life-threatening allergies. And undesignated stock albuterol for emergency treatment of signs and symptoms of asthma. Required in all public schools per code of Virginia. I hope to answer any questions you might have on these changes.
Any at all?
Just thank you.
Yeah, we definitely want to uh abide by the law and and make a self. Um self, uh what am I trying to say? Allow students to be able to take care of their albuterol personally rather than go jump through hoops, is what I'm trying to say.
Yep.
Okay, not seeing any questions for this policy. We'll move on to eight oh three. JHCE recommendation of medication by school personnel.
And this policy, JHCE recommendation of medication by school personnel, was adopted in March of two thousand and eighteen. This policy continues to align with current V SBA policy and no revisions are recommended. Any questions?
Thank you. Hi, Ms. Fowler, how are you?
Well, how are you?
Good to see you tonight. So why, why just psychotropic me- medications? Why not all medications or any medication? I mean. It just seems to me you wouldn't want school personnel to recommend that you take Pepto Bismol, you know, so.
I think this is a, this is more in terms of when you're meeting about students who may have um educational concerns and we have. I I'm sure there's a history of of uh school employees in the past saying that perhaps your child needs to take. A medication addressing ADHD or a medication addressing other behavioral concerns or. Uh attention concerns or anxiety concerns. So I think that it focuses in on that. I think that we as nurses might say to a student, you may need to go consult with your healthcare provider, you may need antibiotics, but we would not. Prescribe a particular, cause we are not prescribers. So I think this is particular to addressing those concerns that s- uh staff or employees in the school division might have. With students with concerns uh further education.
Thank you, I just was curious why it was amended to just just those. Thank you.
You're welcome.
All right, I feel like I forgot about you for a second, Ms. Ortega. Thank you, Ms. Fowler.
You're welcome. Thank you very much.
All right, uh item eight point four, review of retirement to policy IHG independent study.
Thank you, Mister Chair. Ms. Walters to my right, ready to to present this policy this evening.
Good evening, Mister Chair, Dr. Heron and members of the board. Tonight, I bring the policy IHG independent study before the board with the proposal that WJCC retire this policy. The policy was originally adopted in nineteen seventy-four, was last revised in nineteen ninety-three.
I apologize. Would you like me to start over?
I heard everything you said. No, you go ahead.
This policy was originally adopted in nineteen seventy-four, was last revised in nineteen ninety-three and last reviewed in two thousand and one. IHG outlines the procedures allowing a student to enroll in an independent study course. Currently, WJCC outlines this information for students in two places within the program of studies. On page seventeen, within our experiential learning section, and on page thirty-one, within the listing of English electives. Appropriate staff is identified within the program of studies for students and families to contact with further questions. The program of studies is reviewed and approved by the board annually, allowing this process to also be reviewed and approved annually. I welcome any questions you may have.
And so how does the uh student access program of studies, it's on the website?
Yes, sir.
In other forms as well or?
Yes, we have um hard copies available in school offices at at a smaller rate than one per student. Uh if they would like a personal copy, we also have a PDF available on our website, and we also have a website version, so three ways.
Does a PDF uh version or I, I'm just wondering, um. Is there a mechanism on the program of studies that shows new or edited information?
Annually, when we propose the new program of studies, there is a redline copy that we provide in that. That proposal um within, that lives within Board Docs. Um but not highlighted in the actual produced document uh for clarity of the reader.
And for next year, this wouldn't be there anyway, i- am I right that it was already there?
Yes, independent study is uh listed as a course available in the program of studies in two places, um and. To my knowledge, at this time, there's no intention of removing that course.
Any other questions? Okay, thank you for that, Ms. Walters. And item eight point five, policy IGBB programs for gifted students.
Good afternoon, Mister Chair, members of the board and Dr. Heron. Today, I'm presenting two I policies for your consideration. First, IGBB programs for gifted students was last reviewed and revised in two thousand and sixteen. After consulting with Dr. Colorado, Coordinator for Gifted Education and Talent Development, the only revisions we recommend at this time. Are changing the case of the SMB in lines fifteen and sixteen to lowercase. This time, I'm happy to take any questions.
All right, no questions, I don't think. I think that's probably something we should do. You have one?
I just, I noticed in the um uh in the V SBA sample policy that some other school divisions. Identify and serve gifted students for other aptitudes, and I was just curious if you could speak to that and. Please, just educate us, please.
So we follow a prime predominantly general general ability or aptitude um. Evaluation in our elementary schools, so we are not identifying our students for specific academic content in elementary. Our focus has shifted since um the implementation of our new five-year local plan to expanding our talent development. So that we are recognizing students across multiple assessments and demonstrations of proficiency through schoolwork. So that we can broaden the base of students that we are identifying as gifted. And then we have not changed our program at the secondary level. Thank you.
All right, thank you, Ms. Ford, for bringing that to us. And we'll move on to item eight point six, revisions to policy IKD honor rolls.
Yes, the second policy for your consideration was last reviewed in two thousand and one. There isn't a V SBA model policy for honor rolls. The only revision that we are recommending at this time is to add the cross-reference to IKDR.
Ms. Cook?
Thank you. Um generally, when there's not an a V SBA model policy, I like to understand why we have one when it's not necessarily. You know, part of what's, you know, sort of standard, so could you help us understand why why we think it's necessary to have this policy?
So we know that our students are um recognized in a number of ways across our schools and across the various levels. But having the consistency of having a defined um process. And criteria for recognizing our students for honor roll across our division gives us some consistency. Um of what honor roll or achieving honor roll in our school system means. So in, rather than remove the policy, we developed the regulation that identifies the criteria for honor roll for our students in grades. Three through twelve. Those are the grades that where our students can earn letter grades.
What's the, do other school divi- do you know if other school divisions have them? I mean.
Our review of um policies um revealed that some of our local partners do have. Policies related to honor rolls and others don't. Again, because there are so many different recognitions that students can earn these days.
So the reason we think it's important is to provide cons- consistency across all sixteen schools.
Right, so if a student is identified as earning honor roll in WJCC schools, we know what that means.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, thanks for that explanation, and thank you for the question. Any others for? Yes, Ms. Ford?
I'm sorry, I. Can we go back to the one before the gifted ed? Do we have um a uh local advisory committee on gifted education? Do we have a local advisory committee on gifted education?
We do not have a local advisory committee and have not had one for some time.
Right.
However, when we went through the review and revision for the five-year local plan, we did include a wide array of stakeholders, both internal and external.
Okay, and, and we still submit an annual report, do we not?
Yes, we do. We just submitted it last month.
Is that part of the process, using that, having those people involved in that, in the report, or how's that? How's that work?
That reporting process is just reporting the services that are available to our students through our Program of Studies and our curriculum, and reporting the number of students at each level who are identified as gifted.
I guess the question I have is, I mean, I don't know the number of students that are classified as, as gifted, but I, I'm just curious if there's, if parents or anybody has raised that notion that, that we don't have a local advisory committee on gifted ed. We have as many, I don't know how many kids we have.
We have.
But I know we have, and, and actually, the, the regs say that a local advisory committee on gifted ed shall annually review, but then above it says, may appoint a committee, and we don't have a committee, so I'm, I'm wondering why, how that disappeared. It used to be a very active committee a number of years ago, and I guess it's not anymore.
When we reviewed the local plan and revised the local plan in two thousand and twenty-one, we had seventeen parents who were a member of the committee, fifteen community members, and in excess of fifty internal staff members, representing our gifted teachers, our administrators, central office staff, so we had a large group.
And we had parents on the committee whose kids were in the gifted program?
Yes, sir. There were seventeen parents, representing all sixteen schools.
Okay. It just strikes me, I know the state requires that we have S E, our special ed, they have to make reports, it's just, I'm, I, I don't know, I, I would not be opposed to trying to pull that, something like that together, because we, I would imagine we have a sizable number of kids that are in our gifted programs, all the way through.
Yes, sir.
I think Ms. Ford has that number.
One thousand eight hundred thirty-nine were the number of gifted students enrolled in W J C C schools for the twenty-one, twenty-two years.
And how many special ed kids do we have?
That number I don't have.
Yeah. Ms. Bishoal would have that number?
One thousand nine hundred and eleven was our December one count last year.
I'm sorry?
One thousand nine hundred and eleven.
So you're right behind them, then. Okay, all right, I just, I want to make, I, 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 I know when they get to that, when we started that a number of years ago, there was opposition to it for reasons that really aren't relevant, but I, I, I just think it's important that those kids have ongoing support, and I think an advisory committee is, is one of those things to do it. Those are the kids that drop out of high school. I mean, there's a whole, we talk about research, there's a whole line of research that has looked at the progress of kids in that category, so I'm, you know, I guess, that's all, that's all I wanted to say.
Thank you, Dr. Pierce. Any other questions for Ms. Ford? Was that you, Ms. Young? You have a question?
I was just going to say, we did, we did, at Policy Board, we, at the Policy Committee, we did discuss the gifted advisory committee. We did discuss that, and apparently, I mean, you can correct me if I'm wrong, but apparently parents, parents did not continue to express interest, they didn't participate.
Then were they asked?
We'd have to ask her.
Yeah, were those, were those parents asked if they would be interested in being on a committee?
When, we haven't had any requests from parents to reestablish the Advisory Board, and it wasn't a topic of concern that came up during the local plan writing.
Yeah.
Okay.
All right. Well, thank you for all of your work, Ms. Ford. It's always great to hear from you. Appreciate your professionalism, too. All right. We're going to move on to our action items for the evening, starting with nine point one, can I have a motion to approve the personnel actions this evening as presented?
Mr. Chair? Oh, go ahead, all right. Got it.
Rock, paper, scissors.
Who do you want to do it?
Ms. Young, please.
Okay, Mr. Chair, I mean, that we approve personnel actions as presented.
Thank you, Ms. Young. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Ms. Hundley. Uh, Ms. Aller?
Mrs. Young?
Aye.
Dr. Pierce?
Aye.
Ms. Cook?
Aye.
Ms. Hummel?
Aye.
Mrs. Hunley?
Aye.
Mr. Dowell?
Aye.
And we have a few committees that we're about to take action on. Before we do, I just want to say thank you to all of our parents and community members, stakeholders, and even board members that have committed to supporting the, the school division in this way on these committees. So we're going to look at item nine point zero two, Approval of Appointments to the Twenty-First Century and Career Ready Advisory Committee. Can I have a motion there, please?
Mr. Chair, I move to approve the appointments to the Twenty-First Century and Career Ready Advisory Committee as presented.
Thank you, Ms. Hundley. Is there a second? Ms. Hummel, thank you so much. Any discussion? Okay, hearing none. Ms. Aller?
Mrs. Hunley?
Aye.
Mrs. Ordigo?
Aye.
Mrs. Young?
Aye.
Dr. Pierce?
Aye.
Ms. Cook?
Aye.
Ms. Hummel?
Aye.
Mr. Dowell?
Aye.
Item nine point three, Appointments to the Student Advisory Committee. Is there a motion here?
Mr. Chair, I move to approve appointments to the Student Advisory Committee as presented.
Thank you, Ms. Hundley. Is there, do we need to list these names? I think in the past we have.
It says as presented, we would need to go back and revise.
Do we need to, though?
Um, it says as presented, so I think that's sufficient, but if you want to do that, I mean, that's fine.
Yeah, I just wanted to make sure we're, we're good. Okay. Thank you, Ms. Hundley.
Maybe we can ask Ms. Aller to put the names in the minutes, certainly.
Thank you. Thank you, Ms. Cook, for that recommendation. Is there a second for nine point zero three?
Second.
Thank you, Dr. Pierce. Any discussion? All right, Ms. Aller?
Mrs. Hunley?
Aye.
Mrs. Ordigo?
Aye.
Mrs. Young?
Aye.
Dr. Pierce?
Aye.
Ms. Cook?
Aye.
Ms. Hummel?
Aye.
Mr. Dowell?
Aye.
For Approval of Appointments to the Special Education Advisory Committee?
I moved that the appointments of the, of the citizens in the special advisory committee for terms ending September thirty, twenty twenty-four.
I second.
As presented, perhaps, so we can?
Yeah, it's not, yeah.
Just want, go ahead and read those, yeah, read those names for me.
You want to go down the list?
Or you just read what it says, Recommended Action on the?
Do you see that, Dr. Pierce?
Where it says Recommended Action?
At the top of that agenda item, it'll say Recommended Action.
I'm sorry, doesn't the board have to recommend? Or do we have to approve?
Yeah, so that's what.
Right here. That's what he said.
No, 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 I'm sorry. Recommended Action.
Oh, okay. We moved to, I, I moved that we approved the appointments of the Special Education Advisory Committee as presented.
There we go. Thank you, Dr. Pierce. And Ms. Hundley, for the second. Any discussion on the Special Education Advisory Committee? No. Ms. Aller?
Dr. Pierce?
Aye.
Ms. Cook?
Aye.
Ms. Hummel?
Aye.
Mrs. Hunley?
Aye.
Ordigo?
Aye.
Mrs. Young?
Aye.
Mr. Dowell?
Aye.
And again, thank you to everybody that has thrown their hat in the ring and said that, yes, they'll support these fine students in this way on these committees. Item nine point zero five, Revisions to Policy B B F A, Board Member Conflict of Interests and Member Ethics. Is there a motion?
Yes, I would move to approve the revisions to Policy B B F A, Board Member Conflict of Interest and Member Ethics as presented.
Great. Thank you, Dr. Pierce, and thank you, Ms. Young, for the second. And as I recall, we had a bit of discussion as to which version we were going to use for this policy, and we had decided that we would use the long version and just cover all of our bases. Is there any discussion around this, further discussion?
Yeah, I agree.
Okay, it looks like we're ready, then. Ms. Aller?
Dr. Pierce?
Aye.
Ms. Cook?
Aye.
Ms. Hummel?
Aye.
Mrs. Hunley?
Aye.
Mrs. Ordigo?
Aye.
Mrs. Young?
Aye.
Dr. Ba, Dr., I can't speak. Mr. Dowell, excuse me.
Aye, thank you.
Thank you.
And nine point zero six, Approval of Release from Compulsory Attendance for Case Number R two-two-two-three-dash-zero-three. Is there a motion?
I move to approve the release from compulsory attendance for case R two-two-two-three-dash-zero-three.
Thank you, Ms. Hummel. Is there a second?
Second.
Ms. Hundley? And Ms. Aller?
Ms. Hummel?
Aye.
Mrs. Hunley?
Aye.
Mrs. Ordigo?
Aye.
Mrs. Young?
Aye.
Dr. Pierce?
Aye.
Ms. Cook?
Aye.
Mr. Dowell?
Aye.
And nine point zero seven, Approval of Release from Compulsory Attendance for Case Number R two-two-two-three-dash-zero-four.
I move that we approved the release from compulsory attendance, Case Number R two-two-two-three-dash-zero-four.
Perfect. Thank you, Dr. Pierce. Is there a second?
Second.
And Ms. Young, thank you. Well, Ms. Aller?
Dr. Pierce?
Aye.
Ms. Cook?
Aye.
Ms. Hummel?
Aye.
Hunley?
Aye.
Mrs. Ordigo?
Aye.
Mrs. Young?
Aye.
Mr. Dowell?
Aye.
Great. Thank you, everybody. And we'll move on to our board member comments. Ms. Hummel, may I start with you?
I just wanted to, oops, is it me?
Is there?
Okay. I just wanted to say thanks to Mr. Keever for all the work that he put into the, into your structures, and thank you. I know there are a lot of moving parts. It's a big, big move for this community, lots of positive ramifications for everyone, so I just wanted to, to thank you a whole lot for recognizing the science, I guess, and moving forward with a, a plan that'll be better for the majority of our students, and also wanted to thank Mr. Snipes for all of his work with the C I P. That also is a lot of moving parts, so I appreciate his attention to all that, and then wanted to thank our custodians for everything that they do. You cannot go into a school at W J C C and not marvel with just the, the condition that the schools are in with our, our custodial staff, so thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Hummel. Ms. Cook?
Thank you. Yeah, I'd like to echo what Ms. Hummel said and add my thanks to that, as to, to our staff and particularly custodians as well, but I also wanted to say that I had the great pleasure of visiting Jamestown High School, Berkeley Middle, Toano Middle, and Hornsby Middle Schools, Laurel Lane, James River, Matoka, D J, and Blatant Elementary Schools. It was quite a, quite a tour, and it was wonderful to see so many students engaged in their learning, a lot of smiles, a lot of concentration, a lot of happy people, and it was really good after, you know, a pretty difficult run on the last several years to have, it was a palpably different sense in the schools, and it was a lot of energy, a lot of positive energy. Amazing signage in the schools, everyone, the staff, the teachers, everyone was just ready to teach, and the kids were ready to learn, and it was, it was wonderful, so it was a good, a good way to spend a couple days, and I want to thank Dr. Heron for taking me on that tour, and it was good, so.
Thank you. Ms. Cook? Ms. Young?
Yes, thank you. I want to echo the congratulations to our custodians. They, they work hard, and, and again, our schools are pretty clean, I mean, very clean. I walk down the halls and go, wow, looks like, looks like they're out there polishing every minute of the day, so, but to know that I, want them to know that I appreciate it. I also want to just, one, one morning, I, I stepped in to see Ms. Aller, and on her, on her desk, it was covered with policy, the, the law, the, I mean, I'm sitting there, I'm, I'm, I, I just, my heart kind of bled for her, actually. We're, we're very fortunate to have Ms. Aller and her expertise and her continued willingness to, to pursue that, and because when we come to, I think Ms. Hummel and I would agree that when we come to policy meetings, that we, we get off pretty lightly most of the time, thanks to Ms. Aller and Dr., and Mr. Keever for all of their hard work. I just wanted to say thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Young. Ms. Ordigo?
I just want to echo my colleagues' comments on our custodians. They are often not, I mean, when we think of school staff, we, we think mostly of teachers and administrators, but they're just as critical to the, the safety, well-being, and the, the great environment that our kids get to learn in. And, you know, thank you to all the staff for all their, their work this week, as, as always. I don't have a lot of additional comments. Thank you for letting me join this way. Hope to be back to my normal self next time.
Yeah, feel better.
Thanks.
Uh, Ms. Hundley?
Yes, that word echoes coming up again. Mr. Snipes for the C I P report, thank you very much for that. Mr. Keever for your report, and I just encourage, as I said, to the community, get your creative juices to flowing with recommendations to help us with that. I know most colleges and universities always told their students, the first, two people you should form relationships with first when you go into a building is the custodian and the secretary, so thank you to the custodians for their hard work, and also, I was able to visit Berkeley, and being a child of more, I did better in the arts than I did academics, there were a lot of children that are gifted in those areas, and I did get to see that at Berkeley, and it was just the things that the kids were doing in art and career and technology class, and music and band was exciting. And secondly, I got to also tour Toano, and just, you can't walk in that building without being affirmed by all of the positive messages everywhere you look. You leave out of there just grinning from ear to ear, and I almost wish we could splatter all those things all over the community to remind people about kindness and acceptance and gratitude and, and all those good things, and just, just want to just tell teachers, you're doing a great job, hang in there, and we appreciate everything you do.
Ms. Hundley? Dr. Pierce?
First of all, I, I want to mention that our, our continued support for our custodial staffs, and, and they very much need to be recognized as the, during the Custodial Appreciation Day. We have the cleanest, brightest schools anywhere throughout the state of Virginia. When you could see your reflection in the floor, you know somebody has really been doing some work out there, and they, they really have, you can't say, I can't say enough about that, and, and that leads me to the, the next thing I wanted to mention is that, is the C I P, proposed C I P. There is going to be a public hearing October eighteen, and I very much urge parents, other members of the public to attend that and, and, and hear more about it, and also to, to give us feedback as well. I think that's really important. And I can't, I, I have to also recognize the incredible challenges to trying to come up with a later start date, time for high, high school students. I, because I had nothing else to do, I went back and looked at twenty years of, of minutes from our beloved school boards over the years. This topic, I can't tell you how many times it came up, and it came, one time, it came very, very close to becoming real, and, I don't know, several people still had way too many, anyway, it died, so I, I can't, I, I can't tell you how much I appreciate the work, Mr. Keever, that you did, and I know, Mr. Snipes and, and your staffs, I And I know Mr. Snipes and your staffs. I know it's, it's like a maze. And you don't know where you're going to come out until you go through all those different parts. And, and, and I know, I know how hard it is to bring those two closer together. And I, I can't tell you how much I, I really appreciate that. But I am so excited that we're just a little bit closer to that. I know my kids would have benefited from a later start time when they, when they were going to high school. Not so much benefit of a boy. High school, you know, you just, you gotta poke them, and, 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 and they were responsible. They were doing their homework, that kind of stuff. But it was always Saturday. Forget it. You're not going to see them until one o'clock in the afternoon. So I, I can't say enough about how important it is to do that. I really do support that.
Thank you, Dr. Beers.
Mr. Dowell, if I could just, I think we need to nominate Dr. Beers for like school board member of the month.
Historian?
Historian, I like that.
That's amazing.
I like that.
Yeah, the S O P historian.
Yeah, I'm sorry to interrupt.
And I know who those people are, so if this does ultimately.
He knows where the bodies are buried.
I'm going right banging on their doors.
Thank you, Dr. Beers. I, I want to say thank you to our two speakers that made the effort to come out and lend their voice to this process, what it is. So thank you for coming out and letting us know your perspectives on these different things, or, and, and just to say thank you, which was heartwarming and endearing. So not to us, but to our, our teachers and our, our staff, our faculty, our leaders here at W J C C Division. Speaking of leaders, be remiss, and I appreciate that it wasn't overlooked to say thank you to our custodians. Yes, our buildings are nearly spotless all the time. It's one of the things that is really important to me, I come from a military background, that that floor can shine. And our floors do shine. But without seeming, seeming too kitschy, I, I think what shines more when we look at our custodians is that they really know our children. I'll go into a school, my kids' school, on a back to school or whatever event, and the custodians are, of course, still there in the evenings, and they know my kids' names. It's just, it's always been heartwarming to, to see that kind of relationship between our custodians and the kids that they serve. And they do it with a servant heart and a servant attitude, and I appreciate that about, and they serve us, by the way, the school board and, and the senior staff, waiting till very late in the evening for us to stop talking so that they can clean this room. So we very do much appreciate our, very much appreciate our custodians, our professionals. Had a little bit of discussion this evening around the Gifted Education Advisory Committee, and I would be interested to see if that's something that could be resurrected. I, I want to offer a little bit of support in that area. It sounds like that there was conversation within the policy committee. I'm not sure where that landed between our board members and the policy committee, if that's something that they were interested in seeing. But there could be great value in that, especially seeing that there are eighteen hundred some odd students that fit within that category in relation to nineteen hundred that are being served by another advisory committee. So thank you for that question, and, and I'd be interested to see what comes of that. And then a thank you, a final thank you to our, we talked at length regarding transportation and buses. I greatly appreciate the Ops Department of Transportation, Mr. Lambusta and his, his team. Thank you to Mr. Baker over there in the corner, and just constantly, every day, pounding the pavement to hire bus drivers. And you gain one, you lose one. You gain one, you lose two, and the effort never stops. And we're, we're getting quality work out of our staff here, and it, it's very much appreciated as well. So thank you all around, and, yes, Dr. Beers, you have something to say?
Yeah. Neglected to say this. I've known Patty Bowlen for probably thirty years now, and I, and I, and I was surprised when I saw that she was retiring, but I, I just would like to say that I have always very much appreciated her help and the work that she's done with classroom teachers in the area of technology. And I.
Your mic is off.
Which is.
Myself off, and I, I wish Patty Bowlen well and, and hope that she has a really meaningful and happy retirement as well. But I, I, I would be remiss if I didn't mention her.
Thank you, Dr. Beers. Oh, yes, thank you. Thank you. Yeah, before we close this meeting out, and I had myself, it's right there at the top. I just overlooked it. With, with this board, I don't see any issue with putting policies on our consent agenda for our next meeting? Great. Thank you, Dr. Heron. All right, and so we'll make that, sure that happens. Items on our schedule coming up, Special Education Advisory Committee meeting on the thirteenth of October at six thirty. That's virtual and at the Rec Center. Twenty First Century and Career Ready Advisory Committee meeting on the seventeenth of October at three thirty in room three hundred here at the, the central office. And then the Student Advisory Committee meeting on the nineteenth of October, three P M, at Jamestown High School Media Center. And then the Policy Committee, gonna look at a dozen more policies on October twentieth at eight thirty A M, room one oh eight here at Central Office. Really appreciate your work.
Capital letters to small, to lowercase letters.
Important work. We like those.
Upcoming meetings, closed session on the eighteenth of October at six P M, followed by, as Dr. Beers mentioned earlier, a public hearing on our recommended capital improvement plan, same evening at six thirty P M, in the gymnasium at James Blair Middle School, followed by the regular meeting directly after that public hearing. And then on the first of November, four and four thirty respectively, it's going to be our closed session and work session with action items. And with that, we see that our agenda is set for the next meeting with policies added to the consent agenda. And without further ado, this meeting is adjourned.